It's Babu Kessa. Hey Bob. My little backlit.
Yo, yo, how y'all doing?
I'm good, and you?
Oh, I'm doing fine. I'm doing. Let's see here. Well, we've had sixty people register.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
What that wants to translate to, I don't know, but. Somebody said they couldn't share something on Facebook. I'm gonna with private. I never. Put private on this thing.
Mm-hmm.
I don't put none private on Facebook. There's nothing private about Facebook. There's nothing private. He's trying to fool myself. There's absolutely nothing. Um, private on Facebook. Well, hello Deborah Jackson.
Yeah, hello.
Well, hello. How are you?
So how are you doing otherwise?
Uh, I'm doing okay. You know, I'm doing fine. You know, we're doing what we can. How are you doing Senator?
Yeah, well, I'm doing well. I mean, you know, this whole situation is kind of slowed down the whole traditional campaigning.
Yep, I would say so.
Yeah.
I would say so.
So we'll get it done.
Uh, indeed, indeed. So I'm glad you're here this evening. I'm very excited about what we have. Um, you know, kicking off. Uh, here, this, what we can make happen.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm gonna. Let me just close my voice down right now as I continue to respond to some people. Uh, welcome Brown Boy forty-four. Welcome Mark. So glad you're here. We'll get going shortly. Glad to see you Bob. We'll get going in a minute. We got folks coming up in here. It's a beautiful thing. All right, y'all. Come on in the house. Brother Baysmore. Absolutely fantastic. Come on up in the house. Good to see you, brother Baysmore. Uh, welcome Asafu. Glad you're in the space. Come on in the house. Uh, we'll get started shortly. Aya responds. We've had. Several people come up in here. So, uh, response. So looking forward. To seeing you. Welcome Mama Laura. So glad you were here. Come on in the house for this powerful discussion. Aya responds to the COVID nineteen virus. Uh, welcome. Hold on just a second Bob. Welcome, uh, everyone. Uh, glad you're coming in. We got some people more coming in and some callers. So thank you so much. Uh, this is a powerful evening. Uh, we're set for a powerful evening, just helping a few people get on in the space. Thank you for being here and for being on time. All right, welcome everybody. So glad that you are here. Uh, getting some other people, um, that are coming in. Um, and so I'll be right with you. So glad that you're here for this powerful evening.
Peace, peace. What's going on good people? Uh, I hope y'all are doing well. Glad to be in the space with y'all.
Likewise, my brother. How are you, man? See you in a long time.
Indeed, indeed. I'm, I'm, I'm doing all right. I'm, I'm, I'm catching up to you. I turned thirty about two weeks ago. So I'm, I'm trying to, I'm gaining on you Baba Kojo.
Keep doing it. Keep leaving. You, you'll catch me.
That's the goal. That's the goal.
No, I'm finna give out telephone number. You know, people who are trying to get in by phone and they don't have the, uh, information from our Facebook and other pages. I'm gonna give you the telephone number as I'm giving it to, uh, Baba here. Uh, and that is, uh, six four six. Eight seven six. Ninety-nine twenty-three. I'll repeat it. Six four six. Eight seven six ninety-nine twenty-three. And then they'll need to, you'll need to put in a code and the room ID is four zero four. Two zero one. Two three five six. Four zero four two zero one two three five six pound. After you put that number and press pound on your phone, you'll be brought right in.
Okay, fantastic. Excellent.
You're welcome. All right. Take it, take it. All right, everybody, everybody. Uh, Seeswa, how you doing sis?
Greetings Baba Kessa.
Greetings, greetings. Uh. Uh, Sister Hickman, where you be, where you be from? Open your mic. You have to open your mic so we can hear you. Um.
Uh, greetings, uh, to everyone. I'm from Pittsburgh. I'm Dr. Berta Jackson Lowman's goddaughter.
Oh, mo, mo, mo. Up here Pittsburgh. Hey Mama Donata. Uh, can't hear you sis. Um. There you go here.
All right. Hi, peace Baba, peace family. How's everybody doing?
Uh, we're looking good. We're looking good. Love that camera. All your beauty comes through. Uh, brother Shabat. All right now, um. Uh, Fanta. There's a name that says Fanta De Hart. If I'm pronouncing that correct. All right.
Hi.
Hi, how are you? Where are you coming from? Where are you?
Philadelphia, Pennsylvania.
Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Beautiful thing, beautiful thing. All right. We'll be, we'll be getting going in a minute. We're gonna, we got some people coming in, so we're gonna try to help them in. But in three, four minutes, uh, this train will be leaving the station. So, uh, if you need to get you some water, you can do that. Um, and welcome Espraza. Am I pronouncing that correctly? Open your mic. You gotta open it. Unmute your mic down at the bottom on the left-hand side.
Good thanks and praise. Yes, thank you so much. Good to be here.
Yeah, where you, where are you sister? Where in the world?
Richmond, Virginia.
Richmond, Virginia. Not a beautiful thing. All right, come on Ema. Uh, introduce yourself brother. Come on in the house.
There we go. Yeah, peace African. So Amash Baz coming through.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Glad you're in the house. Um, all right, folks. Well, you know, while we're waiting, we're gonna wait about three more minutes. We have some people helping others to get in the room. This is a good time to introduce yourself. Uh, to make community, uh, y'all, because that's what we gotta do, uh, here. Uh, so, uh, feel free to introduce yourself right now. Open your mic, introduce yourself. Um, uh, so we get going here. Um, Estella, hey. What's up? What's up? So glad to see you.
Hi Mama.
Hey, Richmond's in the house, in the house. Makes me feel good. Um, all right, who else? Somebody else was about to say something. Who's that?
This is a house. I'm a fool here.
All right, I'm mom of four. Uh, that mom of four from Bermuda?
Chicago, Chatau, Southside.
All right, so glad that you're here. Chatau in the place. All right, um.
This is Asafuta Alona Edwards in Columbus, Ohio.
Whoa, what's up, what's up? Uh, so glad to have Columbus, Ohio in the house. Uh, we're about to cover the new United States, y'all. Uh, Mama Laura. Uh, who is Mama Laura? Ayana, come on.
Greetings. I'm from Mount Vernon, money earning, New York.
I love that. I have to say that's the first time I've heard that one. Mount Vernon, money earning, go along with it. It's a beautiful thing. All right, I think Ayana, you about to introduce yourself. Come on in the house.
Good evening. Ayana Tillman. I am a seminary student at the ITC in Atlanta. I'm originally from the state of Maryland. And I'm happy to be here tonight. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Seminary student, my foot. There's a powerhouse up in here. Don't get it twisted. Don't get it twisted. Um, I just don't want you to have images. There's some love by somebody went behind the ears and just trying to figure this out. This must have been. Been dealing in our community for a, a good bit, um, and continuing to learn. Um. Well, my life is, is just come up in the place. Uh, so I know, uh, it's all good. Uh, and it's ten minutes after seven. Is that the cue? All right, everybody. I think we, uh, welcome, uh, Maula. So glad that you're in the place. Uh, my powerful brother, my let us make man brother. Uh, my, we going to, uh, the baddest attorney, uh, um, on the planet, brother. Uh, so glad you're in the house, um, Maula. Uh, by phone, we have a number of people, uh, by phone as well as those who are on the screen. And, uh, uh, so, uh, it's about time, uh, for us to, uh, jump off. Some people will continue to come in. Uh, we've had over sixty-one people, uh, register. And so let me get started, uh, correctly. Um, that I want, is there anybody in here older than sixty-five? Well, I guess I.
Yes, I am.
All right, beautiful. Well, do I have permission, uh, your permission to continue?
Yes, you do.
We'll have to have a conference and discuss it. Yes, yes, yes.
Um, the, um. Uh, let me see if I can cut that off. Um, so thank you so much, uh, Baba Kojo. Uh, Baba Kojo, why don't you introduce yourself?
I'm Baba Kojo from Collinsville, Maryland.
Uh, hold on, I'm gonna, uh, try to have to cut these voices stuff off here. Ha, let's see here. All right, that hopefully will, will cut that off. Um. All right. So one of the things you, you know, family, and you're here to respond to this call, and I will say, well, let me stop. Wait a minute. Athia, will you please introduce yourself, maybe?
Oh, surely. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, Athia Mati Mojo here. Uh, co-founder, co-director of Aya Educational Institute and, uh, glad to be here. Um. Yeah, sorry for the, the virus called COVID nineteen and, um, glad that we're all gathering right here today. Asha.
Um, all right, so the, um, uh, Athia, there are, uh, some folks who are still blowing up my phone. Will you, uh, take it, um, so that, um, you may help a few other people coming in? And when you're tired of that, we can just let it be. Um, it's twelve minutes after. So when you get an opportunity, um, you can come get it.
I'll come get it right now.
All right, great. That's what I mean. Ah, that's what I mean. Hold on folks. It's a beautiful thing. I know you gotta plug it in. Um. It's what I call a good problem. Uh, when we have more folks coming in. Um, all right. Uh, welcome to Aya responds to the COVID virus, right? Uh, COVID, excuse me, nineteen virus. Um, all of you know what's going on. Uh, it's important to us, um, that we detail our response in five-pronged response, okay? And that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. Uh, those five different things. Um, some of them will be scheduled for classes that will start on Thursday and Saturday and go through April eleventh. Uh, some of them will be early morning classes. We'll go through those so that you get it. Um, let me briefly go through those five, uh, prongs, okay? Um, and we like it because it makes five fists, I mean, five fingers that makes a strong black power fist. Because part of our response is going to have to be one, uh, tailored for our community, one that is about, uh, black power and black empowerment. So the first prong is we are the cavalry. Um, and, uh, that's really to, uh, turn this thing so that we really focus on, um, strengthening our immune systems. The second one is melan mastery. And that is how do we feed our blackness to support that, uh, immune response? Uh, very, very powerful. The third one is education, where we'll talk about the youth and the adult educational offerings that we are offering during this period for our community, free of charge. The fourth one is, um, a counter to the ills of social distancing. We know that social distancing exists, uh, for to stop this or slow the transmission of the virus. It also creates problems, all right? Uh, and I'm talking about emotional problems, communication problems, alienation problems, and we really need to, uh, address that. And to that end, we're going to talk about, um, uh, classes that we're offering free classes to help with that. And those will be Thursday and Saturday, Thursday and Saturday, Thursday and Saturday. So a series of those are coming. The fourth, uh, excuse me, the, um, well, in addition to the emotional connection. Uh, or healing the emotional alienation caused by this, we also have to heal our cultural connection. Because black folks, us touching and being close together is how we get our culture thing on, okay? It's how we survive captivity. And so we need to particularly look out how we're going to use this time, especially to lift up our culture and for us to engage in it in a very powerful way. More than we normally would, all right? And, and how to account for the fact that we'll be doing that in many times in separate spaces. The last one is, um, the last prong, um, is tips and resources. And this is because this, uh, virus and the response of the various governments are changing from time to time, all the time. We want to really keep you up to date. So we have a number of experts who are coming in, a number of people. Some will be talking about how to grow food. Some will be talking about, um, various kinds of herbs. Some will talk about yoga and exercise and breathing. And so that's going to be an ongoing, uh, class that we have as well. So five prongs designed to, uh, explain our response. Now, the hope is this. The hope is that you can take away something that you can use, that your family can use, that your organization can be about. It really is about having those who are thought leaders, uh, in our families and our communities to grab hold to some of these ideas and to make it happen, to duplicate them in your own way, in your own sphere. Um, to make this, um, kind of response a movement. Because you can bet that the response, I mean, what's coming at us is orchestrated. We clearly need to, in a similar way, grab what you can and move it forward. Um, and so without, um, any further ado, let's start with the first one. Right. And the first one is simply, we are the cavalry. Everything about this virus and the, and the description of it and governmental responses, um, everything about it. Encourages us to sit and wait. To wait on the testing over here, to wait on the vaccine over here. Now, you know, testing is okay. I mean, it has its problems, but it's okay. That's to slow the virus. Uh, labs working on their vaccine. Nah, that's okay as well, though I don't trust them. What's in the middle, y'all? This big swath in the middle is us and our own immune system. Please hear me. The problem. Is not the virus alone. In fact, the problem is our weakened immune systems. I want y'all to understand. This theory that folks are part, this is not new. It was a germ theory, the bacteria theory, and the virus theory. And this theory is to breed dependency. Now, I don't mean that there are not viruses that are dangerous. I don't mean that there aren't bacteria, okay? They are, or they're not germs. When the response is Big Pharma and pharmacies and, and laboratories to the exclusion of us building our own bodies. That's a problem. We need to do that. Now, you do know about this virus. The people who, who, who died, most of them have had multiple illnesses. Okay? Most of the people who died. Now, the reason that they say the elderly are more target. Well, that's not true of Baba Kojo. Baba Kojo is eighty-one years old and he's not more risk. I'm probably more risk than he is. He just did eighty-one push-ups. It was eighty-first birthday. But typically, here's why that is generally true. Because our elders are on, now I'll try to put in with this, our elders on medication. I want you to file up the text chat, for those of you who know how to type in the text chat. How many medications do you believe that our elders are on? On average, put a number in there. How, what's your guess about the number? Is there a text chat available? No?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, I just typed in there.
Okay. All right, I got four. I got six. I got five. On the average, elders sixty years old and older are on how many medications? All right, mommy money says seven. Blood pressure alone can be five to seven. Ross Harris says six to seven. All right, time up. Twelve. That's the average. Y'all know what the average is. Okay, so there's some folks, a whole lot more, uh, on them. All right. Now, these medications weaken our immune system, okay? This is why elders are more, uh, at risk, not because they're just older, okay? It is because, uh, it goes on, okay? One other piece that's important, and that is those people who have been getting flu shots. Are also at greater risk. I want you to hear me clear. Those people who are on flu shots. And that have been because the natural immune defenses have been surrendered to those. to those that come from pharmaceuticals, alright? Um, and so, um, it's important. Now, for those of you who own high blood pressure medication, you also are more at risk, okay? For those you who own heart medication, anything that particularly, um, are ACE inhibitors, okay? It really depresses your immune system. And that means all the more reason you need to listen carefully this one and the other subsequent meetings on how do you build your immune system, correct? The biggest thing is to understand the breakdown. Who is being, what is this virus and who is being attacked by it? Why and what do we need to do to build our immune system? Right now, I'm not dealing with where it come from, who made it. This thing is, is causing havoc in our community. And it's really surrendering us more and more to sit and wait, to sit and wait, to sit and wait to they figure out the answer, okay? And weakening our own bodies in the process. So now, uh, I really want, if you can take anything away, and that is we are the cavalry. Now, some of you, I want you to look up, cause y'all are internet savvy and smart. I want you to look up the 1918 Spanish flu. The 1918 Spanish flu, um, having to do with we are the cavalry. What do you think black people's position was in terms of hospitals and hospital care in 1918? Okay? You think we were high on the list, alright? Now, when you wanna compare pandemics and epidemics, that 1918 Spanish flu is one that's brought up. No. We couldn't get into the hospitals. We had to do for self. We had to create our own hospital settings and we also had to strengthen our own immune systems. So this is not the first time. The difference is we knew it then, now we seem not to, okay? I've watched epidemiological studies of this virus and how it operates, how it gets into the body, and I'll say a little bit about that. But at the end of everybody doing all the details about it, they just leave it for us to wait for Big Pharma or stay in our homes and hope against hope that, uh, it won't get us. That won't do. So let me just give you, um, a protocol. And we'll talk a little bit about this in terms of the way the virus operates. Here's what's needed for those of you who are taking notes, for those of you who are moving forward. Get lots of sun. Noonday sun, if you can. Half hour at noon was, is worth more than an hour later on, okay? But if you can't do it noonday, try to get bright sun, alright? Sun is antiviral. Air is antiviral, okay? Now, everything I'm telling you, I'll be glad to share with you data, information and that kind of thing, okay? And so, um, and you know, I, I just do, I just, right now, I'm going to the short part. In addition to that, the sun activates what, y'all?
Melanin.
Activates melanin. So now, we need to talk a little bit about, uh, let me come to it. I'll come more to how that melanin is activated. They, right now, get sun. Get sleep. For the same reason, not only is it important to rest your body, it's also important for, by at midnight, for you to be well ready for that midnight mother lode of melatonin, not melanin, melatonin that courses from the pineal gland to the pituitary gland. Then the pituitary gland throws out something called a melanin stimulating hormone. That will hit your melanocytes and again to have them pump, okay? So you need sun and you need sleep, okay? Now, you also need exercise. This is a virus that attacks the lungs. It goes through your mouth or your eyes or your nose, but it doesn't mess those up. It gets to your lungs and to create a upper respiratory, uh, a lung, uh, issue. So here's the bottom line. It attacks your lung. If your immune system is not strong, it will struggle with it. Now, you always have an immune response, but it will struggle with it. As it struggles with it, it produces fluids. If your immune system is not efficient in terms of handling this, then it will produce fluid. The fluid, what you, what they call fluid on the lungs, it literally is blocking, um, the oxygen, the gas transmission from the alveolar, okay? On the end of your lungs, you have alveolar, alright? They allow CO2 to go out and, and fresh air oxygen to go in. That, that on your lungs, that fluid blocks that. That's why it's harder breathing. That's why they say ventilators. All of ventilators is come down your own throat and mechanically push and pull the gases, push the oxygen in and pull the CO2 out. Now, do know that while your body is doing that, that just means that you can begin to breathe. It means your organs are getting, uh, oxygen and they can begin to heal and your body can throw off this virus. Please note that last thing, that a ventilator doesn't stop this virus. Nothing else does. Your body throws it off, whether you're in the hospital, on a ventilator, or whether you're in your house like you are tonight. I want y'all to understand this because it's really, it's really easy to get sucked into that folks have this, this somehow will go in the hospital. And when we go in the hospital, they'll have everything we need to throw this virus off, and it's not true. Now, to be sure, if you cannot breathe, a ventilator is critical. Also, it's important, if you do get the virus, to breathe as long as you can through the fluids on your own, okay? Please do not surrender quickly to just because it's difficult or painful to a ventilator, okay? You really wanna keep pulling and asking your body to do its work, alright? And you want to feed it, and we'll get into that a little bit later. So, so far, we says get sun. We, we also said get rest. We also says, uh, exercise so that you are pumping your lungs. Now, my recommendation is a 180. Y'all type this in the text chat, alright? 25 pushups, 25 situps, 25 lunges, 25 squats.
Right.
Okay? Uh, and 80 jumping jacks. Now, you can do this, alright? And you're gonna have to have a gym to do it. Try to do it two, two times or three times a day, alright? Designate people in your house. After I get finished this list, I want you to think about who you're gonna designate in your house or in your community, who will call you, who you will call. And this person is gonna be the exercise person. They're gonna ask everybody, have you done your 180, alright? Have you done your 180? Alright, now, if you can do this outside, do it outside. Get the sun, get the air, do it on your back porch, alright? Now, while you're supposed to be quarantined or, or sheltered in place, it don't mean you can't go in your front yard, okay? Alright, so, alright, you got that, 25, 25, 25, 25, that's a hundred. Pushups, situps, lunges, squats, and 80 jumping jacks. Now, what happens if you can't do 25, do 10? What happens if you need to do what we used to call girly pushups? Do them, okay? Get on your knees. It's alright, just do it. And, but the key is do it vigorously enough so that you're having to breathe because you're building up your lung capacity, okay? And since this virus attacks the lungs, you want to do that, alright? Now, continuing with the protocol. Cut out sugar, okay? Y'all, we can do anything for eight weeks, alright? We can do anything for eight weeks. If, if I go down, then my family is really messed up, okay? So you can't tell me that as much as I like or want sugar, that I can't do this because it's hard, or cause I just love it, or cause that kinda thing. My family is critical, um, for this. I am, my family is dependent upon my health, and so cut out sugar for eight weeks. Cut out sodas, juices, alright? Don't go running thinking of you get Tropicana, you home free. If you want some orange juice, squeeze it yourself, okay? Don't go in them juice, I don't care what they say, fresh squeezed and all that. If you ain't squeezed yourself, it's got sugar in it, alright? Uh, if you just went and bought it and you have to do it, please get rid of it. I mean, do it, do it and get, let it pass on through your system, alright? Here's, there's a, um, the second layer of your immune system is called your neutrophil. And what's critical for neutrophils is that you, uh, avoid sugar. Now, the first level for, of your, for your immune system, the first immune system response is what's called macrophages. Now, I'm not gonna go into details because we're gonna have other ongoing classes where I can go into detail about macrophages and neutrophils and white blood cells produced in your bone marrow and those kinds of things. Right now, I want you to understand that leafy vegetables and a plant-based diet is your function, okay? Um, I don't care, after eight weeks or 12 weeks, if you wanna go back to it, I'd be sad if you do, but go back to it, okay? Right now, this is an emergency response. And just as well as they have you wearing gloves and washing your hands for 20 seconds, each one of these things is critical protocol for building your immune system, modeling for your family, modeling for your children. So we ain't just sitting watching Netflix and waiting for the shoebox. Alright, y'all with me? Alright, so now, so far, we have sun, we have sleep, we have exercise, we have no sugar and green leafy vegetables, especially, put green leafy vegetables, a plant-based diet, but green leafy vegetables, alright? And I know it's gonna break some of your heart, but your family is worth it. No dairy, okay? Now, when I say no, if you can't get to no, get as close as you can, alright? So if you just gotta have a sugar thing, it's okay, I'm gonna have one time in the morning and I'm not gonna do anymore, okay? Y'all, uh, this is our community's power response. Now, the reason this is hot in the first clip is because of this whole germ, uh, virus theory and medicine is about to, is, is all about you're naturally getting sick because what we eat and then, uh, the cavalry coming to the rescue. You see, had, with our medical, our medical system was worth a nickel, um, eating well would be normal for us, okay? As opposed to eating badly, alright? And one of the things I've started putting out, and I want y'all to join me. Anybody you know in, in the medical industry, they need to be championing, not just washing our hands, they need to be championing us strengthening our immune system, alright? And ask them, put them on blast. You know, some people with doctors, every, what I'm telling you, doctors already know, alright? They know that the people at risk are risked because of weakened immune systems, sometimes because of medications, and all the time because our diet has us be susceptible, alright? So just as we're urgent, just as you're bu- bugging people. Alright, let me make sure we got this diet protocol so, so we can move on to our next prong, alright? So what I got so far, help me out.
Uh, you got sugar or no sugar, uh, green leafy vegetables, uh, no dairy. Do our 180, get as much sun as we can, get as much rest as we can.
And exercise.
That's right, 180, that's exercise, um, alright? Now, uh, somebody also typed in this text chat, cut out sugar and all his cousins. Okay, definitely, definitely, don't let nobody grab one of them yellow and pink and blue packets. Okay, a sugar substitute, that would run away from things like the plague, alright? Now, it also, when you're shopping or when you're eating, just turn over the back if it has O S E on it, dextrose, low toast, anything O's, you know, save it, you know, for, you know, something else. Uh, but not, not for your health, not for this, okay?
And it includes maple syrup and, and, and all the syrups and jellies and...
Alright, yeah, alright, Baba Koji coming at you, okay? He ain't gonna leave no stop, no turn, okay? Do the best you can, uh, uh, and he also is saying, um, maple syrups, uh, and various other kinds of, uh, cousins of sugar. Um, uh, get as close as you can, everybody, um, get as close as you can. Our immune system, our bodies, I don't know how, whether you know, but if you look up the recent statistics, I looked them up yesterday, haven't looked today. There are about 303,000 confirmed cases worldwide, and there were about 97,000 recovered. I want you to understand, you're talking almost a third of people, and that's not, and that's not done. That's not the end, okay? Of who, who actually have been diagnosed, who've recovered. So we know, we also know that this, this disease, this virus is not as deadly as SARS, for example. Certainly not as deadly as MERS. The reason that's important to know is because your body has, uh, the power to throw it off, okay? Your body can throw this disease off, alright? Um, now, while it is more not as deadly as those, it is more dangerous than those. Now, why is that? That's, it seems like a paradox. How can it be more, um, less dangerous, less deadly, excuse me, and more dangerous? How can it be? Cause it is not as deadly as SARS, but it's more dangerous. How come? Come on, baby, come on, y'all.
Is it because it, um, stays on surfaces longer?
You got it, you got it. Hey, Osafol, glad you're in the place. Uh, you're right, uh, Joy, it is because it is more contagious, correct? And so the answer for that, y'all, the best answer for that is your own strong immune system, alright? And that starts right here, okay? It starts with your mind, it starts with you believing that your body is strong enough. Now, this is why all of the various descriptions, all of the, here's how you gotta wash your hands, here's how dangerous it is. They also give you this subtle message that your body cannot possibly defeat this virus, and that is not true. Now, let me tell you what this country did during World War II, that it could do today, but we need to do. How many of you remember V is for victory, as in victory gardens? Alright, Baba Koji is 81, he remembers that. That is, this country had a whole thing of victory gardens. That is, the campaign nationwide was for people to plant vegetables. If you don't know about that, look it up, alright? That's what, now, of course, that's not what's happening now because Big Pharma, Pharma, not farmer, but Pharma as in pharmacy, controls the government. And so it's really important, if we're gonna be eating leafy green vegetables, if we're gonna be drinking juices, to grow them, to take them out of the garden, buy them from the farmer's market, um, and have them every day, alright? So now, enough of that, I think you got a basic protocol. And there are some, there are some, there's specific things as we have other classes, like each one of the levels of defenses of your immune system, we'll talk about this needs 2,000 units of vitamin A. This needs 2,000 units of vitamin D. I will tell you right now, your macrophages, which is your first line of defense, needs vitamin D. Your monocytes, which is your, uh, third line of defense, needs vitamin D, correct? What is your best source of vitamin D? Come on, I know I got some powerful people up here. Type in the text chat, type it in the text chat. What's your best source of vitamin D? And I'm... That's right, rah, okay? Rah, the sun, do not be confused, okay? We're talking about vitamin D3, alright? If you're talking about building your immune system, you're talking about getting at least 30 minutes of that noonday sun. Take your lunch outside. You and your children too, your grandma and them. Now, some of y'all old enough to know how the old folks used to do when they'd get sick, they'd get on the porch. Why you think they sit on the porch? They knew what big pharmacy doesn't want us to know, that the sun is healing. And so, ha, being in the sun is critical for your immune system at the level of macrophages, at the level of the neutrophils, at the level of monocytes. Enough of that for right now, alright? Now it's time to go to, to part two. I wanna take my breath, is there anything, I know I'm at risk, but I'm doing it anyway, any question? Uh, I just have to do it, I'm sorry, Evelyn, um, you know, it's hard to do this, I, it's hard for me just to talk to people. My granddaddy was a preacher, so he had to hear somebody saying something, amen, thank you, Lord, what you say, get it on, or any questions. So right now, I'm gonna open it quickly before we go to prompt number two. Any questions or quick comments, you certainly can find the text chat, I'll look there if somebody's talking, uh, and try to respond to any questions there. Um, and, uh, Mama Afua says stevia is a natural sugar substitute, yes, please, uh, just use this sparingly as well. Uh, but, but yes, uh, it is, alright? Who got something to say? Or question?
Hey, this is, this is Baba Mark Gaskins, I just wanna concur with everything that you've said and, and, and say that, um, as I've been following your videos, it has helped me, um, getting my family out, planting in the sun, um, just listening to music, it actually had a dramatic change on me internally with my blood pressure and everything from not listening to the news every day, finding out what's going on. I tested it out, I turned the news on because I wanted to see what was happening. All of a sudden, it was like, oh, God, so, 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 yes, um, I have not gone back to the news, I've just been pouring into my family, listening to music and, and enjoying the sunlight, so.
I'm so glad you said that, Baba, because now, do not think for one minute that folks don't know that telling, scaring the daylights out of everybody, okay? Uh, with numbers that are suspect and we gonna have whole class on that, alright? Um, and Mom Evelyn's gonna, you know, get down with that. But the point is, having people be isolated and fearful does what to your immune system? Sister Hickman, what does it do?
It weakens it.
It weakens it, it weakens your immune system. So this whole notion, oh, oh, so wait, we gotta make sure that we strengthen this, alright? And, and, and what you said, doing things as opposed to sitting and waiting, alright? Others, I'll take, uh, one more, two more comments and questions, I'm also looking at the text chat.
Um, hello, it's, uh, Sister Hickman. So in Pittsburgh, it's perpetually, it's dreary here quite often. Um, in the summer, we tend to get sun, but at this time of year, the fall, the spring, we just don't get it. It's, it's rainy and cloudy and overcast. So, uh, I'd like to hear some suggestions about how our family can get that vitamin D activated in other ways.
Okay, thank you very much, um, move south, sister, I'm just kidding. Um, it's, it's gonna be important, in that case, I would definitely still go outside when you can, when it's not raining, alright? To get the fresh air, because fresh air is also antiviral, alright? And whatever can filter through the, through those clouds, uh, let me just tell you something that people have wrong. Folks will say that because of your dark skin, then you are more at risk in Pittsburgh than white people for vitamin D deficiency, have you heard such foolishness?
Yes.
Alright, let me tell you why it's foolishness, okay? Because your melanin, which is sliding us into the, on part four, number two, your melanin does not block UV rays from the sun, okay? Please hear me clearly, your melanin, the melanin in your skin, okay? And all of you on this call got melanin in your skin, yeah, light skin, dark skin, we got melanin in the skin. If you know, you don't have melanin in the skin, you know what, basically, then you, you're albino, alright? And, uh, even white folks ain't albinos, or there are some white people who are, but I'm talking about, boom. So, hear me, please help me dispel this rumor that melanin blocks the sun and the UV rays and that's how it protects you like an umbrella. It does not, melanin eats the sun. It drinks the sun, so if there are any UV rays coming through, sister, your melanin is gonna make it that you gonna get more of it, okay? Because your melanin absorbed. Alright, now, the vitamin D test that you take, alright? Saying that black people are vitamin D deficient is wrong, wrong, wrong. Because it's based on folks searching for the prevalence of a protein that white people developed as they were in the north and that protein would bind to vitamin D2. Your pro, your, uh, there is D1, D2, and D3, D3 is what's bioavailable, alright? D3 is what's made when, uh, the UVA and B rays go through your, um, skin and begins a chemical process that, to make vitamin D1, D2 into D3. D2 is a precursor, so, so white people, because they lived in the frozen north, uh, created a protein that would bind to D2 so that in those months, then they would be able to make vitamin D3. So the test that, for vitamin, alright, uh, is a test that, to see how much of that protein you have. Well, black people don't have much of that protein. How come? Why we don't have much of that protein?
We don't need it.
Because we don't need it, we didn't need it, alright? Where we were, boom, you walk out the door, you got, in five minutes, you got as much sun as you ever need, welcome, Kim. Glad you're in the house, alright? So, we don't need that. Now, so, many, many black people on vitamin, uh, D supplement pills. Uh, and all I'm telling you is the test, and there are another way you know that the test about vitamin D, it, uh, those tests are wrong, is another test, and that is, black people's bone density is greater than any other ethnic group's bone density in the United States of America. You cannot be the most vitamin D deficient and have the highest bone density because vitamin D is directly related to, uh, the calcium uptake in your bones. Hear me, okay? Now, this is good news, we gotta get to our folks, because too many vitamin D supplements actually harmful to us, okay? Alright, and we'll get into, uh, some of that later, but right now, I want you, I'm, I'm hoping I'm answering your question. So Celeste, yes, take, you can take vitamin supplements right now in your situation to help you, because it's dreary and whatever. Uh, your body, go ahead and convert it, uh, and of course, there are some, uh, so-called animal sources of vitamin D and those are, uh, oily fish and those kind of things, you can find those readily available, alright? Uh, and still get your butt outside as much as you can, get to exercising as much as you can, model this for your family. Y'all, what I'm hoping
Baba Ketsa?
Yes.
I'm sorry to disturb you, uh, I just wanted to, to point out to everybody, most everybody probably is seeing in the chat some suggestions from folk in terms of getting sun, some lighting we can buy, somebody asked about water and we're giving each other different ideas, I just wanna know, everybody know that we'll make the chat available to everybody. So we'll all have the benefit of everybody's, uh, great thinking and experience as well.
Excellent, 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 um, so, the, the, um, there are a couple of questions, uh, whole wheat, wheat grains, sprouted grains. Uh, there are a whole number of grains that are good for you and some are better than others. Um, sprouted grains are always the, the, the best because the, they add, uh, increased digestion. Um, and, um, yes, we do need to eat, uh, grains. Now, the dominant va, your, your, so that's part of a, of a plant-based diet, that's, I'll just mu- use it generally, uh, like that. Mama Afua also says, um, the, uh, countries with selenium-rich soil had low incidence of disease intimate. Oh, yes, and she says high doses of vitamin C is also very important. So, uh, instead of going and getting Tropicana and all of that, no matter what it says, get you some lemon, squeeze it, get you some lime, squeeze it. Have them lime juice every morning, have it in the afternoon, alright? Vitamin C, this particular virus does not like vitamin C, I'll tell you one more thing about the virus and then we gotta go to melanin stronger than this. Here's one thing. There is some research, and I'm still researching it, but I've, uh, gotten pretty good, pretty good evidence, I'm not ready to be totally conclusive. But so far, it seems that this particular virus loves the cold and can't stand the heat. Particularly, it dies, again, I'm still having some research on this, so don't quote me on it, this is what I, my, my preliminary research is telling me. At 133 degrees, this virus dies. So if you went into a sauna and the sauna air is usually 180 degrees or 70, 190 and stayed in two hours and breathed that air and you did that a couple of different times, the virus would probably die, alright? There are other things that we're working on and by next Monday, we'll have some about if you don't have a sauna, how you can also do this, how you can also apply this. The main thing I want you to do as we leave this particular section to go to the other one, is let me, let's make it a campaign that we will strengthen our immune systems, okay? That we will not wait for laboratories and figure out what they are doing. That we will not just, uh, do social dicks distancing and just hope against hope. Our people never did that, our people went to those vegetables, went to them collard greens, okay? Went to the mustard greens, alright, went to them herbs, them teas, those mullin', alright? And we're going to have people on, on our Tuesday, on our Thursdays and our Saturdays classes, some who will say, here are some herbs. Some who will give you various other kinds of things, some who will talk about breathing techniques, we'll do that. Right now, please join me, help make this movement. When you leave here, tell 100 people, tell five, do something, say, we got to take charge of our, building our immune system and we can do this for eight weeks, maybe 12 weeks, we could do this, alright? So that it's not just a regular suggestion, eat better, have, no, this is a war and our building our immune system is how we win, okay? I want you to understand, so, exercise cannot be optional, alright? Cutting out sugar can't be optional, getting sun can't be optional as much as you can, alright? Those things that we listed have to be about, this is what we're doing, alright? And you challenge every mental health professional that's black, you challenge every medical health professional to help you talk about what to do to strengthen the immune system, not just what you do to wash your hands. You already got that message, not what you do to social distance. What, have them pick their brains and ask them only one question or two, how do they, you, do they, what can they give you to help you strengthen your immune system, emotional, social, herbal food, okay? Alright, enough of that. Um, now, let's go to prompt number two. Prompt number two, um, is melanin. Uh, I've talked a little bit about it, um, I got to pull it up and some of you saw today, how many of you guessed what that, uh, uh, I had, um, a picture there and I said, guess what this is? How many of you were able to guess what that was? This is on Facebook. Oh, let me, let me see if I can pull it up, let me see if I can get somebody here to guess what it is. Oh, um, my, 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 they're black things, they're powerful black things. And let's see, there you, there you go.
Sister, sister
Ah, Sister Lucretia, there you go, so let me, let me give the picture so everybody can catch up with Sister Lucretia. Bam, you see that? Can everybody see that? Did everybody see it, for those?
They look like figs.
They look like figs, but they're not figs, they're black garlic. Why am I showing you black garlic as we talk about, uh, melanin? Because guess what you're looking at, is you're looking at melanin, I'm gonna show it to you again. You see, melanin in our bodies come in three forms, and that is in mammals, alright? Uo, U melanin, Feo melanin, and neuromelanin in our brain. Melanin in the plant kingdom is called aloe, A L L O melanin. What you are looking at is aloe melon and you're looking at one of the most powerful resources for it, okay? This is just fermented or aged garlic, you age it for about 40 days. You can buy it like that or you can buy regular garlic and age it yourself. That is, the aging process, uh, kicks in the melanin process and therefore, you're eating this and it's sweet, okay? Uh, it's sweet, you see that, uh, brother Maoli, you see that black garlic? That's what I'm talking about, alright? Blackness, um, so this black garlic, I encourage you to get, I encourage you to, to eat, okay? I encourage you to ferment, I encourage you to research about it, okay? Now, of course, when you look at garlic, you don't expect for it to have any melanin, but there it is. And it is powerful, it helps your own immune system do what it does and I'm gonna give you a little bit of that. But I'm also gonna tell you about some other black things. Some of y'all already know about black seed oil. Mm-hmm, do you know what color are the seeds from black seed oil? Do you know what makes the black seeds black? Yes, it's melanin, aloe melon, and guess what? You're eating aloe melon, helps your melanin do what it needs to do, okay? So, black seed oil, hit it. Now, one of my favorites. And I bet you, I know, there's no run on this, I was just at the health food store and able to clean out all me, some of the bins is gone, all that, I'm so glad, people, the health food store. But there was, there was one bin that wasn't cleaned out. It was black rice. It was, they called it forbidden rice. Let, let it keep on being forbidden from other folks, alright? Now, some of y'all, if y'all know black rice, give me an amen, can I get an amen, uh, on the black rice, alright? Moe, 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 now, I don't care if you ever heard of it before, I don't care if you never made it before, alright? We're talking about strengthening the melanin in your body, okay? Um, and using aloe melon to do it. Aloe melon, again, is the plant melanin in your body, alright? Now, I'm gonna give you a, a couple of surprises, how many of you know of the wonderful plant echinacea? How many you, of you know that echinacea is a powerful plant for when you have, you know, infections, echinacea and gold, a golden seal? What if I told you that echinacea also has melanin and melanin, uh, isolated from echinacea is one of the most powerful, um, uh, aids to your immune system on the planet, okay? You see, what people began to do is try to figure out why echinacea did what it does, why it was so popular, why people used it so much? Why did it have such a powerful reputation? And they began to isolate and isolated the, the melanin in it, okay? And, um, and what they found is that, um, it's one of the most powerful things, it helps, um, your spleen and some of you know about the role of your spleen. Um, it, um, it's just powerful, now, I'll, I'll, um, well, let me just, might as well, now, I'll, I'll come to that in a minute. So, so echinacea. Um, now, here's another one, this one's for the brothers, because you need to be taking this anyway, particularly if you over 30 years old. How many of you have ever laid your eyes on salpimento berries? Pal, excuse me, palmetto, and that pimento cheese that I, I couldn't stand in, 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 uh, in grade school stuck in my head. So, salpelo, palmetto is the proper name for it. And, um, salpimento is a powerful, they're black, those seeds are, you boil them bad boys and make you some tea, okay? You boil them bad boys and make you some tea, okay? Grind them up and put them in capsules, okay? Already ordered me some, whole bunches of them. If I was in Florida, you know, in Florida, they made against the law to, to, to pick them. Alright, because they're trying to get it where folks can sell them. The point is, I'm pointing you to foods. There's another thing that's not black, but it has melanin, they've isolated melanin from, and that's green tea. Okay? Now, in our, in other classes, we'll give you the whole list of them. I'm gonna try to pull up the, um, uh, let's see if I can find that. Um, alright, so let me just show you a little bit. Because I don't want y'all to think about what Kessa is pulling your leg. Alright. So now, here's some of the research that you will get, uh, in our, uh, classes. Pharmacological properties of melanin is function and health, alright? So we're going to go through a couple of them, just, just so you see. Sunscreening and radioactive protective effects of melanin. Y'all, most of you know this, okay? What you don't know is this. Uh, I'm gonna focus right here. Notably, mice that were given white mushrooms supplemented with melanin, oh, excuse me, a little bit before this, alright? Um, the location of the mushroom derived melanin in the body. So folks took, uh, the melanin from mushroom, put it in the, in the body, okay? Exposed, um, mice to a lethal dose of radiation. Those who had been given the melanin from the mushroom for four days lived, those lacking the melanin died from a gastrointestinal, intestinal syndrome, okay? Even mice that were given white mushrooms but supplemented with melanin survived at the same rate as mice given, uh, black mushrooms. The authors concluded that melanin containing mushrooms can provide significant protection against radiation and could be developed into all radio protectors, alright? Let me move on. And, um, antioxidant effect of melanin, alright? Now, I can't give you the details right now, but I really want you to, uh, 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 understand that this is real research, this is not pie in the sky, right? Um, melanin extracted from tea leaves was found to inhibit the oxidation, uh, oxidation of low density lipoproteins, okay? Which supports the idea of an inhibitory effect of melanin against free radicals. I'm gonna move on. Enhancement of modulation of the immune system. I'm gonna sit right here for a minute, because this is what we're talking about building, uh, so that we can survive and we can defeat this coronavirus, okay? So I'm gonna take it a little slow. A number of previous studies have shown that plant and synthetic melanin can modulate cytokine. What are cytokines? Cytokines are white blood cells production and enhance several immune parameters. Recently, it was demonstrated that animal, uh, funk, and fungus melanin, extracted, uh, melanin like pigments from black tea showed that all administration of melanin like pigments to mice significantly stimulated splenic, that is from your spleen, lymphoid tissue. Later, Hung demonstrated that melanin extracted from different T species induce cytokine, that is, white blood cell production, with green tea melanin being a hundred times more active than black tea melanin. It was also reported that antibodies secreting cells produce significantly more antibodies in animals treated with tea melanin that did antigen control, that is, people who did not have it. I want to say something about antibodies. Right now, there are over ninety-seven thousand people who have, uh, been diagnosed with it and who have recovered. That means their bodies have developed antibodies to this, okay? If their mamas and their breastfeeding their children got antibodies from, okay? Uh, since your saliva is just like your blood, for those of you who old enough to exchange saliva, then the other person is developing immunity, uh, to it, okay? Um, don't be laughing, it's the truth, alright? My, my point to you is, they're even looking at taking plasma from people who have developed the antibodies in order to develop a pharmaceutical form, alright? What I want you to see, what you were just looking at, is that melanin helps with the antibody secretion. Alright, so you need to develop antibodies, you want the melanin to help you do that. Alright, just a little bit more on that here. Um, similar, uh, um, uh, our, my fridge, my fridge showed that in albino rats, black seed melanin, I'm at that black seed again, induced high and long lasting antibody response to sheep red bug blood cells by stimulating the immune system. That is, they injected foreign blood cells, the blood cells from sheep. They injected those cells into, um, albino, uh, rats with no melanin. And they found that the antibody response was high and long lasting, okay? So, um, the, uh, the, the authors reported that melons with the highest level of activity were found in alium sativa, that's that black garlic, y'all. Um, tabebuya, uh, this is a tree that grows in, uh, Florida and other places. Uh, this is salpimento and there is your echinacea, alright? There is more, but I want you to, hopefully, you're getting the picture. And I'm gonna stop to answer any of your questions, but I want to remove any shadow of your doubt in your mind. These people who will say, it is a myth that black people can't get this because we black. That's true, black people have contracted this illness, alright, this virus. Black people will contract this illness. And black people's melanin, unless they are compromising it by how much fried chicken they're eating, how much other medications they're using to suppress their system, or how much dairy and other ways they're suppressing the system, that their melanin will aid in them recovering. When I say recovering, sometimes they may not even know they got it. It'll be like, bow, get out of here. You want and you need a, a quick and efficient immune response. If your immune response is slow, is sluggish, is, is struggling, it will produce through, I don't have time to give you the details now, I'd love to, but the, it will produce the fluid on the lungs, alright? And that is what takes people off the planet. So you want an immune system that is like, come on up in here, alright? Just come on up in here, we got something for you, alright? That's how you want your immune system to be. Now, to do that, you gotta first have an attitude of, we kicking this in the butt. We ain't sitting, we ain't waiting, we ain't waiting for no big pharma, okay? Pharmacy, we're not waiting for the government. We are gonna strengthen our immune system as a family, as a community. Everybody get out there, everybody do your one eighty, everybody, uh, uh, eat black rice. Everybody eat, I just showed you, and there are a number of other botanicals, that is plants, where, where the active ingredient is melanin, and ain't nobody told you that that melanin called allo, A-L-L-O, melanin strengthens your melanin so it can do the job it needs to do. Alright, any questions or comments? Uh, science, I feel like, well, my, my great, my grandfather Marsh Tucker would be pleased.
No, that's actually his mom, I'm just on his computer, it's Monica.
Hi Monica, how you doing, sister? So glad you're here.
I have a question for a friend who has an autoimmune disease. She has Crohn's disease and she's on a lot of medications. And I know you said that medications can sometimes, um, suppress the melanin, um, what, what should she do?
Well, it suppresses your immune system, it can suppress the melanin too, suppresses the immune system. And, oh, well, if I were she and she doesn't wanna, you know, uh, get off those and I'm not into telling anybody, uh, medically to get off your meds, uh, it's a decision each person can make. What I would do is I definitely would strengthen the, uh, everything else. I would strengthen, I would eat, uh, uh, green leafies like they were going out of style. Um, I would eat a plant based diet, uh, I would exercise and I would fill my body full as of, of, of melanin, uh, as I can, plant based melanin. Also, get her butt in the sun, if it's a he or if it's a she, alright? Um, so that you get, you get to use the aid that you have. Now, to the extent if she's used to cutting down or can go to her physician, because you can go, like physicians already know this, alright? They know that, um, ACE inhibitors, uh, usually things that end with pril, doprapril or other kind, whatever pril, those inhibitors, alright, for lung and heart, it's already established that, that many of the people in China, uh, and in Italy had those kind of illnesses and were on those kinds of medications. Now, they don't say that, what they say is many people with high blood pressure are at risk. Well, that puts the onus on you, as opposed to saying many people who don't have blood pressure medication are at a greater risk. Notice the difference. You got high blood pressure, that's your fault. But guess what? It's not your high blood pressure, it's the medication that also suppresses your immune system. Now, now, in this case, what I would, um, uh, say to her is to ask her doctor. Tell her doctor, okay? That she's afraid that things that she's taken to suppress her, um, immune, uh, to handle her Crohn's disease is also making her susceptible. And she wants him to figure out the lowest amount that she can be on for eight weeks. Okay? The lowest amount she can be on for eight weeks. Alright, and then her, do whatever she needs to do, okay, to strengthen her system.
Thank you, she's listening, so she's hearing you.
You're welcome, you're welcome. Alright, next question. Best place.
Good evening.
Alright, good evening, come on.
Good evening, Boba Wukesa. Uh, there's much anecdotal, uh, conversation around salpimento being good for the prostate. So I wa, I was wondering if you run across that in your research and if so, could you speak to that?
Well, it is, uh, uh, good for the prostate. You know, there are tests that says, well, when we did a double blind, blah, 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 you know, uh, uh, it, it proved no more effective than a placebo. I haven't got my hands on the study, because part of what I wanna get my hands, how effective was a placebo? And this is important, okay? You gotta watch it. There actually is now science where they are depending on placebos, alright? That is mainly your mind directing your body to heal. So, if, uh, um, and I actually presented to one of my classes, uh, where folks did that, they literally intentionally created a placebo, told people it was a placebo and still got tremendous results where other things didn't. So in order for me to value that study, I have to know how many from the placebo were better. Anyway, yes, my, my, uh, my humble opinion, salpimento excellent for the prostate. Also for hair loss, if you really start researching, you'll find it is now being marketed more as a hair loss prevention than, or as much as it is for the prostate, okay? And in both men and women, alright? Uh, and the one of the most powerful elements of this, uh, salpimento is melanin. That's why the seed is black. Next question. Yes, Baba Brian, the mind is very powerful. It's a whole nother, this is why we're wanting you to help us get out into our community, let's become a cadre, let's become a, a, a force, let's become a movement saying, we will, through building our immune system, defeat this virus. Not we'll wait it out, because of what, Baba Brian, the mind is very powerful. We've been seduced to relinquish the power of our healing to big pharmacy and big laboratories. Please take it back, because the mind is the power to heal, alright? And I know folks wanna say, yeah, yeah, but that's blah, 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 your mind, but I'm sorry, y'all. This mindset that we in our community are gonna defeat this virus because we're gonna become healthy, as healthy as we've ever been. Y'all, what can we lose? Tell me, what do we lose if, if eight weeks later, twelve weeks later, we, we're a healthier community? We've discovered we don't have to have that much sugar, okay? We've discovered we don't have to have that much dairy. We've discovered that we actually develop a taste for some leafy green vegetables. Come on, y'all. Alright, there's another question. If it's working for hair loss and prostate, then it's working along kidney and some way increasing yang. Also, the kidney color is black, so it makes sense. Uh, uh, absolutely, um, there's a direct connection between our kidneys and renal production and this particular coronavirus as well, okay? Um, and the ACE inhibitors, uh, something called angiotensin. Now, there's a brother who begins to break it down, alright? He's called AT, the, uh, the arch degree. Uh, if you go to AT, the arch degree, he begins to break down the angiotensin. Uh, I've, uh, watched his video, I donated to him because of that, because I appreciate the knowledge he was dropping. I've written to him, uh, uh, to hope to get some more information and collaboration, but I'll try to find his, um, uh, website right now, um, where he begins to break down, I gotta take it a little deeper, I mean, he does a great job and he knows his stuff. The, the connection between the, um, uh, the production of this and the ACE inhibitors and that kind of thing like that. That's where I first learned it, I've since also got it from some other places. Um, let's find AT the arch degree. See if I can find. Alright. I'm gonna put the link.
This is KT the arch.
Excuse me, KT the arch degree. I said AT, I'm gonna put the link in the text chat, uh, to his, um, video on YouTube. Um, and if I can get him on in one of our classes, we can bring him on, because we're gonna have continued classes about this, alright? Um, there, so this is KT, the arch degree. He also has a website, also has products, um, and where he's explaining, um, the, uh, and I'll also just put a little bit of the text chat. This is spurred on, uh, by the connection to the kidney, alright? Um, incidentally, the vitamin D three is connected to the kidney, okay? In terms of where it coming. Alright, let me see, any other question, we'll move on to the other one. Uh, uh, what can you do, uh, let's see, about sugar addiction? Alright, let me say something about addiction. The strongest kinds of addiction people talk about is cocaine, morphine and stuff like that. But not long ago, uh, a scientist playing with rats um, started thinking about maybe it's not as much the cocaine as it is the cage. So they made two rat cages. One was nothing but a rat cage. The other they made into a rat theme park. And, uh, they fed the rats in the rat cage cocaine water. And those rats became hooked on the cocaine water. They put rats in the cage that was a theme park and they had a choice, regular water or cocaine water. That's what they chose, y'all. Regular water.
No.
Yes, regular water.
Okay.
Baba Brian already said the mind is a powerful thing. That is, it is our condition, our sense of depression, our sense of hopelessness, okay? That contributes to our sense that we are addicted and we can't break it, okay? Right now, if you had a choice, if your child, uh, whether they're grown or not, or your mother or father, and somebody said, Wukesa, in order for your father to live, you have to give up sugar for eight weeks, maybe twelve. Would you do it? Could you do?
Yeah, done deal.
Done. That's what we're talking about. You, you place, that's what we're talking about. Right now, this is war, okay? You don't play with it. They will let you play with it because they made you sick, they want you to be sick, come on, y'all. And I don't mean that, uh, doctors who go to school, uh, they got horns and whatever. I'm talking about they are part of a medical system. And unless you like Lala Africa, who bless his soul, who just passed, okay? You know, then you're going to follow that process. What I'm saying to you is we can't afford it. I got grandchildren depending on me. I got grandchildren depending on me, okay? I got great grandchildren that ain't got here yet depending on me, okay? I got brothers and sisters who I love. I can cut out sugar for eight and 12 weeks. So that's what I say with sugar addiction, you put beside them, alright? You put in front of them the actual options and not the ones that they tell you. Because your doctors, they just said, cut down on it, they just said it's not good. Y'all, I'm telling you, if you're talking about your immune system, your um neutrophils, you look it up. Your neutrophils, which are part, a key part of your immune defense system is severely severely compromised by sugar. So this is not just do it so you lose weight. Do it so you won't have diabetes, although both of those things are good reasons. Right now, the charge is to defeat this virus, okay? So um uh alright, so there's there is um any other question before we uh move on? Let me see what I'm missing in the text chat, um let me get from uh who's over there. Um is that, could that be Jackie Mayfield in this room? I know bro Phil Haines, is that Jackie Mayfield?
No, this is Jackie Washington.
Hey, Jackie Washington, what's up? Alright, now, now tell me, uh I gotta get, I gotta hear from somebody to to uh. Uh tell me that uh I'm doing alright and I need to keep going. Tell me you getting something, tell me this worth your while if it is. Now, now, here's a commercial. I want all of you to consider Iya Education Institute is becoming a membership organization. So that you can take out a membership for a monthly fee to keep us going and doing this kind of work and expanding, okay? And at the pro time, Mama Fia will put in the link, Mama Fia, if you hear, put in that link, okay? And you'll see those options, I'm gonna keep going, but but you know, here uh uh you know, do it if you can, alright? And every month, so we can keep on expanding and expanding and doing the work that we need to do uh here, alright? Um let me see, I somebody said, now, I don't know Cynthia, I don't know um uh ammo Dean five milligram. Um one of the things that we can do out of this, alright, is identify, we have a number of people may be on the call. Uh who can respond to that specifically.
It's a high blood pressure medicine.
Okay, it's a high blood, well, I'm actually researching, my brother who lives in North Carolina, alright? Uh when I told him about that, he said, well, should I get off my blood pressure medication? And I said, well, let me research, what what are particular ones are you on, okay? Um and so, so I actually will be doing some research on specifically high blood pressure medication and various kinds of options. Um and I always, because I don't claim to be a physician, I'm glad I'm not, okay? Uh I'm a black man, alright, um in our African tradition. And that that believes that he can understand things, and what I do is I educate people and let people make their own decisions, okay?
Okay.
Alright, that's what I'll do, so I'll uh do that. Um but Sabi says black uh seed is sesame seed, uh and it shouldn't interfere with breastfeeding, it's not. Well, black seed is sesame seed, black seed is caraway seed, black seed, actually, there are a couple of different black seeds uh there. Uh there, um um Mama Sabi, um oh, alright. Um now let's move to number three, to prong number three, so ho- hopefully you're convinced. And you won't let anybody convince you that your melanin does not age you, alright? And when we offer classes about that, then you will jump into them, so you can know more about it. Uh this blessing from the creator, that is in our brains, in our eyes, in our ears. Um um that courses through our blood and necessary, I will just say one more about it. So that if people want to know about melanin and its healing capacity. How it naturally goes to wounds, some of you grew up where you got mosquito bites in the summer, can I get an amen?
Amen.
Got some testimony to the mosquito bites in the summer and you scratched the mosquito bites and what your parents tell you about scratching the mosquito bite?
I've scratched.
I've scratched, okay, well, not only would it spread it, right? But in the healing process, those those mosquito bites that you scrapped, scratched would turn what?
Dark.
Dark, maybe dark, right? And you have all these spots and your folks say, yeah, don't scratch them, you know, let them go down. Well, guess what them dark spots, what's that is, alright? It wasn't there before, but to heal that wound, melanin comes to your rescue, okay? So it is not just an absorber of uh and protect your skin from those of our rays of the sun. It also comes to where it's needed, it will come to your lungs. Please don't let nobody cheat you out of that, alright? And don't let you depend, start depending on big pharmacy. Those things that I showed you is pharmaceutical pharmaceutical companies and researchers trying to determining the power of melanin. So they can put it in pills, okay? So they can take it from plants, extract it from plants, extract it from green tea and then charge you for it. And that's wonderful, my thing is, listen, you can get those things uh in in its natural form. And you can also, as powerful as they are, the most powerful developer of of melanin on the planet. Is you and the sun, okay? While those things will aid you, your your body develops melanin, it's a melanin developing machine. Okay, don't let nobody cheat you out of it, alright, go for it, alright? And you'll learn more, I want you to learn, now, I'm not one of them people that says, okay, got melanin, I got the T-shirt and that's all you want to do. Now, you gotta know the science of it and the biology of it, if you're gonna be in our space, but anyway, that's enough for that. Number three, we're so excited to open up Iya's classes, now, a lot of people having to come, so number three is education. A lot of people are coming to um. Uh needing to do homeschooling and needing to do online education because of this uh virus. And that's wonderful, we gotta do what we gotta do. Iya, um um thank you, Mama Aisha, that's the that's the actual C, uh the jealousy. Um um Iya has been doing uh uh education for 21 years. And for 16 of them, we have been doing it online, okay? We have some high standards for how you do online education, alright? Um and so uh we we are opening three classes. Three classes that your middle school and or high school students can attend. One is called Melan Mastery, and guess what we're learning? Guess what these middle school students and their parents who attend and any high school students who want to audit the class? Alright, this is for free, okay? Um for us as a part of this response, after they are there, a part of their response, if they want to join us more fully they can, some already have, okay? So they're auditing the class and one class is Melan Mastery. You don't have to be a middle school student to attend, alright? You'll learn something no matter what age you are, because we got those students learning what you've been learning tonight, except for in more depth and detail, okay? Middle school students going after it. Now, one class for high school students and adults is called the Economic Conundrum, okay? This is economics, culture and history.
Baba Kess, if you allow me, I can show the schedule.
Okay, um uh okay, great. Alright, go ahead, show the schedule.
Uh still disabled, sorry.
Disabled, okay, um that's something, let me see.
That's okay, it's alright.
Okay, um so the the um, Sophia, no, go ahead, pull it up, try it again.
Alright. Okay.
Oh, can you hear?
Okay, so the time for the Melan Mastery class, Mama Fia is covering over that. That's at 2:35 to 3:35, that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, write it down, alright? And let us know if you want your children to attend, if you want to attend. So we'll just know and how to prepare for you being there, if you're an adult or if you're youth, alright? You'll get a chance to see how we teach in this online space. That will help you as you are doing it yourself or you're choosing online programs, alright? So that's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, it's in highlighted in green, 2:30 to 3:35, 2:35 to 3:35, alright? Next um is, and this is for high school students and adults. Um if you lobby very hard, we may let a a middle school student uh in, we actually have two who are advanced and they're kicking it. And this is um once we have highlighted, now it's talked about Brother Tofar. Called High School Social Studies Pan-Africanist Explorations, alright? By um Tofar Melazizwe, alright, and Mama um Ladonna. Uh and uh so this is on Monday, Wednesday at 9:00 AM, alright? Monday, Wednesday at 9:00 AM. Now, the reason we're saying not just for high school students is because you can learn things that you can teach your children during this process. You do not have to just stick to what packet they sent home for you, okay? Alright, alright, Sophia, let's go, and the last one is economic, um it's High School Social Studies. Again, you can attend free, uh it's called Economic Conundrum. This class is about history, culture and economics, history, culture and economics. No economics for us is going to be successful unless we grounded in our historical lessons. And unless we wrap our people again in our circle of culture, alright? And so we studied places like Black Wall Street, one in Durham, the one in Tulsa and Rosewood and Sweet Auburn. And then we looked at how is it that we accomplished what we did? What was the circle of culture that have us closed in our right minds? That's critical because we're gonna have to need to do that. If all we have is vision and numbers, that will not be enough to sustain it, that is not what we had before. You couldn't have black uh just with numbers and and we had the numbers and a vision. You also had to have a circle of culture that was around our people that had had us support each other uh like nobody's business. And believe in each other to build our business like nobody's business and help us defend it. So that's those are three classes that are open to you for free, alright? If you didn't get them, put your email in the text chat, say I want classes or on the website, I think we also have in the form. Uh Sophia, if you can put the form there, we have form for you to sign up for those classes, again, those uh you can audit those classes for free. And uh if you find that it's to your liking, then please jump on in, okay? In a more formal way, now or next uh um year. Many schools and most of around the country will be out for the rest of the year, okay? Learning what you can of this stuff and what you can teach your children, I can tell you one thing. If somebody had taught me science, the way we're introducing science by going through the door of melanin, I would probably. Uh be a scientist instead of an educator, alright? I will tell you one other thing that we do as a part of that, and this is going, this is the education part, hold on just a second. See, Baba Brian said the mind is very powerful, so all of our students and instructors, when you come to class. You got to come to class in your lab coat. In your African Senate lab coat, that's right, created by our own, one of our own students, okay? Now, this may seem like a simple thing. But the mind is powerful and we want our children to scientifically and be scientists. We, when they come in that class, no matter what else, they come in the class and they sit in the seat and they become scientist minded, okay? Um and so that's Melan Mastery, alright, so that's, those are the three classes. Um let me keep keep on going, um there also are classes for parents who are first time educators. Now, you know, a whole bunch of y'all, a whole bunch of parents, you know, they home and they gotta educate their children. And so this class is on Tuesdays, this class is on Thursdays at 10:45. This is tips for parents who are first time educators. What do we do, they can come and ask questions, oh, well, she's wrecking, know what to do, they don't want to do, whatever. I will tell them, but I know we will uh continue to have that class. So that those who are now find themselves to be educated can learn and get some tips and get some support for continuing to do that, alright? So education is number four, alright? Well, what other, I'll say one other thing about that, for those of you who are engaged in education or supporting the education of your children during this time. Earn your education toward this. Um virus and towards studying it. Um and um helping your children study it, alright? It's we're we're having, we're faced with it right now. Why are you gonna have them start stowing, doing something? You know, you can have them practice vocabulary as they are dealing with the vocabulary of this. But make sure that you also include our in our studying our immune system. Or else while you're teaching them, you also will teach them to surrender to big pharma and pharmacy, okay? Make sure that your teaching is always empowering, you can literally start to have them learn, okay? What is, uh if a governor made a statement, what is a governor, okay? What does the government have to do with it? If the president says, okay, you you know, he can uh uh enact the a particular act where he can have industrialized, I mean, or. Nationalized industries, what is the name of that particular power? Are y'all with me on this, okay? That is, you throw out the little packets that they give you and in the place of that, use this situation. Use growing food, okay? Now, if you know, if you know how to grow food, teach your children. If you know how to fix cars, teach your children. If you know how to cook a mayo of a powerful, make a powerful kale salad, teach them that, okay? Alright, if you know, you play a bad game of a bit whiz, okay? Teach them that, okay, alright? Now, why is this really important? Is because the first thing you're reestablishing is you have something to teach them, you have something of value and you're building the relationship, okay? I got this packet of stuff around algebra one, I don't really remember, remember my algebra one, didn't like it in the first place. And now I'm struggling with you to establish myself as a teacher with you on algebra one. That should never be first. First is you teach them something that that touches your heart, that still will be useful to them in life, okay? Because if this this situation doesn't show you anything, is that just having academics is not the answer, okay? Alright, so that's just my last tip on education, so now that's number four, we got two more. Prongs to make a powerful black power fit. And this this one here is probably the most important. And that is, this is the counter to social distancing. We're told to social distance so that we will stop the spread of the virus, cool. But what problems does social distancing cause, cause? Say it out loud or type it in the text chat, what?
Mental health issues.
Mental health issues. Try to be specific if you can, what kind of mental health issues, alright?
Depression.
Depression, come on with it.
Abandonment.
Anxiety.
Anxiety, put in the text chat, if you say it, type it in the text chat, um uh what you saying, Seesway, your mic is closed.
PTSD.
PTSD, okay, put in the text chat. Alright, now, uh low self-esteem, trigger scarcity mindset.
Suicide.
Suicide, thank you very much. So while folks say we gotta stop the spread of this and they're scaring everybody and then isolating everybody. I'm gonna give you the words of Amos Wilson, isolation is the handmaiden of oppression. Y'all know what a handmaiden is? A servant, isolation serves oppression, okay? If we're practicing social distancing, we must compensate for that by authentic, expanded. Emotional connection and cultural connection, we call it A C C, alright? Authentic. Emotional connection and authentic cultural connection. It is critical that we. It is critical that we figure out how to do this. Now, to this end, on every Thursday and Saturday, Aya will offer courses, again for free. Forty-five minutes of some of the most powerful tools that we have used. And they will be fashioned for this virus response. These tools are called Feelings as Messenger. Mama Afeel will be doing a session on how to use confront without attacking. Of that tool is River of Touches. We're going to be doing storytelling and teaching you how to use this time to gather information about your family's stories and how to begin to tell them, not just to your youth, but to each other. And also, how do you heal broken stories? What better time is it than this? Than for us to heal broken stories? For us to learn how to gather these stories, uh, in our families? How to have us do it? How to have our children do it? How to engage in this gathering of family stories and telling of family stories? So you turn off the news and you're telling family stories. So that we're not alone. Okay? So yes, we may be, uh, not connected the way we normally are. But think about a deeper connection. Think about somebody saying, wow, Mama, would you tell me that story of Aunt Kitty again? My own daughter was today, Mama Afeel was talking to her and she said, would you tell me that story again? Okay? So it's important that we then deepen our family connection right now. And, and so one of the classes is family stories and healing alienation through family stories. All right? Another of the, of the classes is also storytelling from the inside out. Storytelling from the inside out. We have been socialized, trained to tell our story from the outside in. I tried, I tried, I failed, I'm a failure. Even though we're telling the stories, we often tell it. The movie Harriet Tubman is told from the, that outside in and is not told from the inside out. Okay? Django is not told from the inside out. Okay? I want to tell you how, that we, we know how to tell the stories and how to learn to tell our story from the inside out, not from the outside in. Just because I'm telling it. If I've been so taught to tell my stories from other people's perspective, then I'm an unwitting and unpaid agent. We have to flip that. Okay? And here's a wonderful opportunity to do it. So there are two storytelling classes. One called Storytelling from the Inside Out, the other one called Family Stories. These will help us extend. There also is a course about us being emotionally authentic and literate. That's Feelings as Messengers. And it's spinoffs. Then River of Touches. And it's spinoffs. River of Touches is how do we affirm each other? All right? Why are we even confronting each other? Why are we confronting? Cause we're in close quarters, so we gonna bump. How do we do that? How do we handle bumping without re-injuring each other at a deep level, the way the society does? It's important that we become skilled at that and we don't just hope for that. Because y'all know, if y'all know me, y'all know what's coming. Hope is important, but what's the rest? Vicky John, what's the rest, y'all? Hope is not a strategy.
Hope is not a strategy.
All right? Hope is important, but hope is not a strategy. And right now, to defeat this virus, we need a strategy. Okay? All those things that you put in the text chat. Suicide, isolation, anxiety, depression. Y'all, we have to be the agents. And here's where I want you to call on every social worker you know that's worth the salt, every psychologist you know and say, listen, we gotta get on this. Now, don't wait for them now. You're just encouraging them to do it and to become a part of this movement that says, we gotta address this, but you're not waiting for them. Okay? You're coming so that you know how to do this. When you pick up the phone and call your sister in Dallas, what do you do after you say, how y'all doing? Is everybody all right? And they say, yeah, everybody's all right here? Where does the conversation turn next? Do you know how to then have that conversation turn to a place where y'all go deeper without clashing? Without, where y'all go more authentic without clashing? And if they raise something and it does come up, how do you know how to turn it? So y'all don't get in an argument that exacerbates the isolation that you already are feeling because you're physically isolated? Y'all, y'all, y'all know what I'm talking about? And we gotta do this. We have to do this. So to become skilled at that, every Thursday from eight o'clock to nine-thirty and every Saturday from nine, from one-thirty to three o'clock, an hour and a half. You come into the room like this. In fact, it'll be this room. But then you're gonna break into groups, break into separate rooms. If you want to know about the, becoming emotionally skilled. How you doing? My sister Joyce King, how, how you gonna talk about being emotionally skilled? So that these cramped spaces don't result into more alienation and more conflicts? Then that's what you'll, you'll go to that class. If you want to know how to use the stories in the family to deepen our connection, even as we're separated in those spaces, then you want to come and get those skills. Again, that's Thursday from eight o'clock to, uh, nine-thirty. And Saturday from one o'clock to one-thirty. Now, those are, those are the classes designed to help us.
I'm sorry, because you said Saturday from what time?
Saturday from one-thirty to three o'clock.
Okay, you said something else. That's, that's okay.
Thank you.
That's all right.
All right, Saturday from one-thirty to three o'clock. We call those A-E-C-C classes. Authentic, uh, emotional and cultural connection. Now, part of the cultural connections also is to, because part of this alienation brings up the way African people have gotten through the hard times that we have faced before is being together and also being together in our cultural ways to affirm our culture. So what better time to recommit ourselves to our people's greatness and to our people's mission? That is, the mission to return our people to our greatness, the mission to defeat the, this oppressor. The mission to, uh, I mean, the mission for sovereignty. And this is important to, we know anything about health. All right, let me just go geriatric. Some of you may know that when men stop working, we get sick. Like that. When you take out a mission, when the mission is gone, sicknesses jump on. Okay? When men and women have a mission, how many you know folks who don't die before the last child get there? Y'all ever heard of that? We ain't, we ain't.
My great-grandmother did that.
Hold on. They gonna hold on, you know, to Joyce King get there. They gonna hold on to Zakeel get there. They gonna hold on to Osefo get there. All right? Osefo had to tell folks, y'all let her die. Okay? Cause they gonna hold on, cause they got a mission. It's really critical right now that we re-commit ourselves in the middle of this to our people, our families, and our people's mission to help build our immune response to defeat this. So those are the kinds of things that you'll get on those classes for Saturday, on Saturday, on Saturday, one, two, three, one-thirty to three o'clock and Thursday from eight to nine-thirty. Now, because this virus, this is the last one right here. Because this virus is changing and because there's a number of different things and a lot of different experts, we also have a session, um, that's, again, it's forty-five minutes. All those sessions on Thursday, Saturday, forty-five minutes. But this will be three fifteen-minute sessions where you get tips and resources. So we'll have people, one of them is Mama Evelyn. Are you here still on the call?
I am, Ava.
On this coming Thursday, one of the classes, uh, one of those fifteen-minute segments is going to be on the politics of the pandemic, specifically decoding the numbers. Mama Evelyn, would you give people just a little bit about that class?
Just really quickly, um, so all that information that we're getting that Baba was talking about, right? Another brother said he stopped watching the news in order to disconnect from all that information. Right? Lots and lots of numbers, lots and lots of numbers given in a way, um, that are really misinformation. Right? So we're gonna break down some of the numbers, look at the, what the meaning behind the numbers um, so that we can pull some information that actually would be helpful for us and empowering for us out of all of that, all of that, all those numbers and all this, this, so this, this many people died, this, this thing happened, this other thing happened. What does that all really mean? And so that's one of the things we'll look at, um, on Thursday.
Mo. All right? Now, she's gonna give you a fifteen-minute snapshot of that. And then if you want more, you can follow her and get it. We're also gonna have Brother Ross Kofi. Ross Kofi is a farmer extraordinaire. For those people who are like, okay, people telling me I need to grow my own food. Bam! You'll get fifteen minutes of Ross Kofi and growing his own food. All right? And so we'll have these on a fifteen-minute rotation for forty-five minutes. All right? And if you don't get enough on Thursday, you can come back on Saturday, though the particular offering may change. And we're gonna publish those. Now, also, on this coming Thursday, during that same time, confronting behavior without attacking is Mama Afeel. All right? Uh, Mama Afeel, you wanna say anything about that?
Uh, just real quickly, as Baba Kissa said, you know, part of the social distancing, distancing has to do with us staying in our homes. And sometimes we got like three generations in there, sometimes more. We got various age levels. We all are, are feeling whatever we're feeling, some kind of way about all of this. And we're gonna bump. You know, we're gonna bump. Somebody didn't take out the trash. Somebody said they do this and didn't do it. And we're gonna need to confront that behavior without attacking the person. And some of you are familiar with our River of Touches, uh, tool. So just some real, uh, gonna look at it really, really, um, like up close and personal, like how to keep living together so close and so personal and do the confronting that we need to do and also not attack.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. And, um, the Bau Ku Dudi Yemi, uh, will, will do storytelling from the inside out. Bau Ku, shake your head, wave your hand, let's hear your voice.
Hey, how you doing Baba? This is Bau Ku Dudi Yemi. I guess we'll, we'll be talking about storytelling from the inside out.
Well, tell me, tell the folks briefly, have you, how has this tool been useful to you?
Oh, storytelling from the inside out has been useful to me in a number of ways. There are a number of components to storytelling from the inside out. One of the components to storytelling from the inside out that has really worked for me is, is storytelling from the inside out, failure to success. So in storytelling from the inside out, failure to success.
Yes?
We see how, uh, we, we, we often take stories in a way that we are told to look at stories. So, you know, if, if I had told that, you know, uh, I have a, you know, I had a job, I had a good job, I had a particular job and then that brother lost that job. And, you know, then he almost lost his house. And now I look at him, you know, struggling, trying to take care of his family. You know, that's one way I could take a look at that. Or I could look at it from a different perspective, my perspective, where I could say, I took that job initially because my aspirations for having a entrepreneurial venture, you know, I wasn't ready for them at that time. I didn't have enough contacts. I didn't have enough resources. And so I took that job to give me some space. You know, when I took that job to give me some space, you know, I realized that I wasn't too long for this gig. You know, I, I could, I could give myself, I get some support to make it through. Until then, it just got too hard for brother. So I had to let it go. So I could save space for the things that I really needed to accomplish in life. You know, and that was the entrepreneurial ventures that I hadn't let go of yet. So what did brother do? I wanted, meantime, my money is low.
All right, now you can't tell us the whole story.
Yeah. I'm having trouble, you know, making ends meet. I said, so, you know, we had to, you know, deal with some, some mortgage paying issues. And in the meantime, I'm still paying it now. We still making it happen, just my money funny, come in slow.
Wonderful. One, one of the things for those of you, thank you, Bau Ku, for all you who talked about depression particularly, it's really important, this tool of learning how to tell the stories. He said, failure to success. That is, many times we're, we're trained to, if we make a mistake or fail at something, the story that we tell ourselves is that we are failures. Okay? All right? Uh, and so that has to be a story that we have to rewrite. And that's a part of how he helps with that story. And, um, and so hopefully y'all, y'all got a taste. You know, I respect your time. It is, um, um, what do we, what did we say? We said seven.
Uh, Brother Tofari, you need to introduce.
Oh, I sure do. Uh, Brother Tofari, I need to introduce Brother Kimmet, maybe still on the call.
Uh, Babakimmet, I think.
All right, but now, Baba, uh, Brother Tofari, uh, uh, is going to be, uh, is slated to do Feelings as Messengers on Saturday. Okay? And again, we're gonna publish this, uh, piece out. And, uh, would you say something about that, Brother Tofari?
Yeah, so really briefly, one, hello everyone. So yeah, Feelings as Messengers, uh, or FAM for short, is what we like to call it. Uh, and what that session is gonna be really tending to is this idea of how do we get into tips, tricks, uh, tools and strategies to have us feel all of our feelings? Like, one of the things that's a popular refrain that we talk about in Aya is that, you know, oppression has been encoded into our learned emotional responses. That's a long way of saying, you know, those situations and circumstances that come up, where you're like, I feel this and I'm gonna say that because this reason, this reason, this reason, what have you. What we're gonna do with FAM is really look at some of the popular conventions around thinking and feeling and cut through a lot of the popular misconceptions and get to a space where you get skilled and feel comfortable with showing the range of your emotions and feelings for yourself and to your loved ones and extending out from there, from a place of authenticity. Um, and they, and really getting to know yourself in a deeper way, in a deeper level. So all of these tools are related to each other. You'll hear references to all of them as we talk more and more. That's the snippet. Uh, we'll talk more about it on Thursday and on Saturday.
Mo, no. Now, what I want to read.
Also, Baba Kojo, Wakisa.
All right? Baba Kojo is here. And Baba Kojo will be doing, uh, a session, uh, that he's just learning about, uh, on that I know he's, he's done for me and for many people. This is a wonderful time for us to read to our children. All right? This is a wonderful time for us to read to our children. Okay? And our grandchildren. Right? In addition to just tell stories, we need to read stories. And Baba Kojo has some powerful information about the impact of doing that and also tools for doing that. Books for doing that, stories, children's books. He's a, you see those books behind Baba Kojo? Raise your hand. Wave your hand or something. There you go. Oh, he's, he's surrounded by about five thousand books. Okay? In his personal library. And so he's key to begin to help us, um, use this time wisely to connect to our children and also to connect them to reading and for us to reconnect to it through our children and our grandchildren. Whether you're with them or guess what? You can also use social media to also read to your children. Still, reading is very, very important. Baba Kojo, would you introduce yourself quickly and say something about, uh, reading, parents reading to their children? Cause that's what you're gonna be focusing.
Well, thank you very much for letting me know I was gonna be doing this. Uh, it's, it's been proven that, you know, you, 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 your children, you teach your children on your lap first, lap time, you get lap time with your children. And it doesn't matter how old the children are. It can be teenagers. Because there's a bond that's developed between you and that child. I tell a story about myself, I couldn't read until I was nine years old. And my grandfather always had books around him. And he was the example for me of what a man was. Black man read and he wrote. Although I couldn't read, he influenced me to love books to this day. You will influence your child's ability to learn on your lap. That's what we're gonna talk about.
Thank you so much. And so there, there will be others, um, other ideas, other things that are coming. We have Aya Parents, uh, who are part of the Aya family, who are skilled. Uh, Baba Brian, Mama Terrica, number of different folks as we, as we have those classes going forward. So make sure that we have your email address. All right, so as, and, and put in the text chat if you can. Uh, stay connected to us. Uh, stay connected to us, watch us on Instagram, Facebook, and, and, and spread the word. We're going to, again, this Thursday and this Saturday. We also gonna have another town hall meeting like this on Monday. So you tell people and/or you can come back, right? Now, it's time to wrap up. But I want you to have the last word, so if you're willing to stay with me for a minute, it's nine oh two. But let's, the way we like to end at Iya is with any appreciations. So if there are anything you appreciate, oh Baba, Kimmet, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great, I see you now, alright, um, and, uh, Baba Kimmet, uh, you don't, you may not know it yet, uh, but you're on schedule for, for, for during a session, uh, on River of Touches. Alright.
Uh, well.
It's a point.
River of Touches.
We can't hear you, your connection is bad, uh, but some of you may see his face, um, uh, and I thank you, he's out there in California where they got the shelter in place, um, uh, there and, uh, and the National Guard to help them shelter in place. Um, so what, what I want to do.
I think he heard that.
Well, I think he can hear well when you talk. Uh, and so, what I want you to do, y'all, if there are any appreciations you have, would you say them now, if there's, if there's one thing you learned or relearned, say it quickly. Um, and if you haven't identified yourself this day, I'm in Atlanta. One thing I've learned is this, or one thing I appreciate is this. Uh, welcome Deborah Watkins, so glad to, uh, see you. So let's end in a sense of community with anything that you appreciate, um, alright, let's hit it, um.
Deborah's gonna say something real quick, and that is, I, I love Iya's classes, and uh, somebody from the West Coast said, can, can they take them? I'm like, yeah, we're on the West Coast, I take them anytime my schedule opens up or is, is, I make, I make arrangements to take Iya's classes. Um, but I wanted to just emphasize, um, as the founder of a black education network, that this is an opportunity. Our children, we call it, you know, curricular violence, right? Uh, what they're submit, what they're subjected to in these white-run schools. Uh, this is an opportunity to actually supplement, uh, what they're getting in these packets and other materials that are not culturally relevant. So thank you, Iya, for your amazing work, and I'm all in.
Moke. Y'all, y'all don't know moke, y'all might get to it.
Moke, 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 moke.
It's from the Chui language, and it's not mope, like moping around, okay? It's moke, and it, the wind has to come from your stomach. Moke.
Moke.
You know.
Hey, Sister Deborah with N A B S W, how you doing?
I'm good, I'm good, Lord, I'm here, but you appreciate about this evening? You just keep doing it.
Okay, so she was talking to Deborah.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Hey.
Hey, that was. Alright, come on, y'all, keep it going.
N A B S W, okay.
N A B S W.
Oh, wait, man, you know what, I'm gonna call on some folks to make it easy. Uh, so everybody ain't crashing in everybody. I gotta hear from my sister Joyce King, what's up?
Good evening, I'm so glad that I was able to get in on the last part of this, and I just wanna congratulate Iya on the wonderful contribution you're making to save our people. Thank you very much.
Moke, moke.
Thank you, Sister. Baba Wakessa.
Pick it up, yes, and, and, and.
Uh, we have one other, um, person attending who we haven't asked to, uh, help us with this yet. Mama Monica Utsi.
She's on the schedule.
Sekofer School. I'm sorry, Sekofer Homeschool. Uh, Mama Monica, we want you to talk about homeschooling options. Uh, and I did send you, uh, a request, uh, I just wanted to acknowledge you, I didn't know you were here, good to see you. Hey, Monica.
But, you know, what I'm grateful for learning tonight is that I have to feed my melanin. I never heard that concept before, and I wrote those things down, and I'm gonna start feeding my melanin tomorrow.
Moke.
Moke, moke. Alright, beautiful thing, good to see you, my sister. Uh, alright, so, uh, uh, Esprada. Open your mic.
Yes, yes, give thanks, brother, how are you and the family?
Hey.
Uh, anything you appreciate about today?
Yes, yes, give thanks, uh, the mission for sovereignty is awesome. Looking forward to contributing, thanks to all of, of you and the awesome works that are being, uh, moved forward. Um, I say, thank you, appreciate it. And, uh, you continue to, um, support the network.
Moke, we'll do moke, moke, uh.
Baba Wakessa, excuse me, one second, I wanted to, um, uh, recognize Sarah Seesway. I think you did earlier, uh, she's Iya's high school language arts teacher. And she put into the chat an essay from one of our students, uh, and that has written about this whole piece, I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Alright, great, uh, Sister Seesway, you wanna have a word?
Yes, um, give thanks. So our students, uh, in my class, they get a whole lot of creative writing assignments. And this past week, they needed to write about all of the good things that are coming out as a result of the current worldly situation. So these are some of the essays, um, that students have submitted to me for sharing. So I have posted two of them in the chat so far, I'm going through. And, um, I'll work with Baba Wakessa, Mama Fear about sharing some further. Uh, but the students are, they have some very insightful words, and I think that it would be great for the parents and the community to hear from the perspective of your young ones that you've been investing in all this time. So, so there, those are in the chat for your reading pleasure, thank you.
Fantastic, talking about how we're gonna teach language arts and grab this, the, 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 uh, this time. Thank you so much, alrighty, um, the, uh, appreciations, I wanna call out, wanna hear from, uh, my brother who I ain't seen on another time, for a long time, a brother from another mother, Osafu Kwaziata. Anything you appreciate, hey brother, please introduce yourself, come in the house.
Uh, really appreciate the conversation about melanin, really, really appreciate the whole conversation about how we fight this, um, uh, this virus. That we have what's inside of us, we have tools in the universe, and we have the foods, and we have all the, the sun, all of the stuff that God has given us to fight this virus and not allow the scare and the shock to, uh, derail us from what we know how to do for ourselves.
Moke, 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 um, alrighty, Mama Renata.
Hello.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, peace, family, um, well, I, there are so many things, um. I think what I appreciated, uh, what struck me first, or actually I'm still thinking about, is the black garlic, the black seed oil, the black rice, the echinacea and the green tea. I, I just never made that connection, and now it's so clear in my mind. And I think Baba Wakessa and Mama Fear, you do a phenomenal job of just grounding us in the importance of melanin. And that is in so many different things and how beneficial it is for our bodies. I'm, I'm just still sitting looking at this list, and I was actually looking up how to make black garlic, how to ferment it, but.
Moke, moke.
I appreciate, I love you all, thank you so much, all the information that you share. Our family has been enriched by your being there, so we appreciate it, we love you.
Moke, and Mama Renata is our chemistry teacher, uh, at Iya Education Institute, you know, moke, moke.
Moke, moke.
Nine eleven, alright, come on, y'all, what we got in the text chat? Uh, I'm just gonna read a couple of these appreciations, uh, put, give voice to some. Um, uh, Renata, uh, says, this is awesome, we love our brother and sister there with us in Richmond often. This is, uh, their home too, yes, we feel the same, uh, moke. Uh, Mama Renata, the social engineer, excuse me, social connecting classes. Look, uh, for the emails so I can spread the word, moke. Uh, Mama Minis said, I learned that the average number of prescriptions for jobs for people sixteen over is twelve. I appreciate Iya leading the charge with the solution of our mental, physical, spiritual, emotional health and wellness. Um, and, um, uh, wow, my husband takes about twenty-five a day more, woo. Alright, so, um, let's take a couple more, uh, no, we can't give everybody, uh, those of you who want to say something that you appreciate, and then we're gonna pull up some music and, and, uh, and leave out of here the right way, the right way.
Yeah, Baba Pachol.
My Pachol, Baba Kendu.
Mama Fear, Baba Wakessa, I appreciate you all around. You could be doing anything else. You could be worried about your own pocketbook, you could be worried about your own family and to say, hey, I ain't got time to talk to the whole African nation. I don't have time to educate the whole African nation. I could be doing something else, uh, besides researching this virus and making sure that our people got the best knowledge, wisdom and understanding so that we can move ourselves forward and be healthy and be together. I appreciate you Baba, I appreciate you Mama, keep on doing what you're doing, and I always got your back, Abimee Fajoye.
Moke, moke.
Fajoye.
Appreciate you Baba.
Moke. We'll take two more, and then got some soul, uh, Makusa for you.
I, Hajaisha Jeffrey C. say, I am just grateful for a way to reimagine this whole trial through my familiar, my cultural, culturally appropriate lens. And it's because of you, you are our God, so you know how I feel. You know how I feel.
Thank you, Mama Isha.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mama.
And thank you for that name that I couldn't think of in the jealousatiwa, thank you, moke.
Moke, well, I shall love, thank you.
One more, one more.
Well, this is Baba Kojo, um, a friend of mine has told me he was down at Alex Haley's farm about a year or two ago. And there was a sign over the door that said, find the good and praise it. And I think, I, I appreciate you and Mama Wakessa by helping us to find the good and praise it.
And. Moke, moke, moke. Well, I have one, first a general appreciation for each and every one of you. Please help us, please spread the word, please make this a movement that we are going to take, we're gonna defeat this virus by taking charge of our immune system. Uh, both the physical part, we need to eat and exercise, but also the, the spiritual uh, and emotional, uh, connection to each other and to our culture. So thank you all, and please help us, keep doing it, we're gonna push it, we wanna turn it around. I have to say that I also appreciate my wife. Name is Mama Fear, our name is Afia, alright? And so without her, none of this would be possible, okay? And she ain't, oh, oh, somebody, I mean, she's both behind, in front and on each side. Okay, that's the true group, okay, so. Love, love, I appreciate you.
Moke, 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 moke.
Um, and, uh, I learned today that, uh, another soul, uh, has passed on. And the best tribute, uh, that we can give, uh, uh, to Brother Manu, uh, the Bongo. Uh. Play his music, okay? And play it, and play it on your social media and wherever, uh, and we're gonna leave tonight with that. Uh, uh, again, remember, keep pushing it out because our classes start on Thursday and on Saturday, and we're back here for another session just like this for anybody who missed it on Monday. I love you all, let's stay black. Uh.
Let's be more.
And that's how we win. Makusa. Mama Ku, Mama Sa, Makusa, Mama Ku, Mama Sa, Makusa, Mama Ku, Mama Sa, Makusa, Mama Ku, Mama Sa, Mama Makusa. Where's that whistle? Y'all hear that? Y'all ain't shaking your head enough for me. What's up?
Say, where's that whistle at?
It's like, woo, make some noise up in here.
Wow. He's off of my phone, so serious dancing.
But I sure my voice. You gonna make it through this, foolishness?
Baba Wakessa got the great music on, that was wonderful.
Alright, everybody, soul Makusa, y'all, y'all get, I'm gonna put the link in the text chat, you can copy it, you can play it. Um, if, uh, and, um, so I appreciate it, if you register for this.
I say.
Session, you'll get a link for this whole session, you'll get a link for it, okay? So you can share the video with other people.
Right.
Um, so make sure that you, if you didn't register, we got your thing in the text chat. Um, love you all, uh, let's defeat this, uh, COVID nineteen and the governments that use it to weaken our people.
I say, I say, I say.
Moke, moke. Moke, moke, moke.